There is.
Whenever you are mayor.
Oh, yeah.
I don't have any corrections still there.
No information.
I'll put it in my manual for the next clerk.
Right.
Would you?
I just didn't have to say that.
I'll call this meeting to order the common council and have our clerk call roll. Hartley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Kittleson.
Here.
Swadley.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mieske.
Here.
Engelberger.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Truel.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Are our twelve elders present? Thank you, Lana. Are there any communications from our older persons this evening? Older person, Hirsch.
Well, I probably will steal your thunder, but I just want to thank Lana for all of her tireless help, support, and great expertise over the last number of years, and I'm sorry that you're going to be leaving. Thank you too.
Yeah, thank you to Lana for the last three years. She's done a great job for the city of Stoughton. Certainly will be missed, yes, for sure. I want to welcome the students from government class. You can always tell when it's almost the end of the semester. A large group. You can come anytime, though, just so you know. Anytime at all, you're welcome, so. And if you haven't gotten your forms signed, any one of our leadership team members in the back can help you out with that. Should be all good by now, though. That's all that I had. Other items of communication? Lana has an item.
So I apologize for my voice, but I just wanted to let everybody on the council and listening at home know that starting December 1st will be the first day that candidates can circulate nomination paperwork for office of older person and mayor. We do have packets available in the clerk's office, and it's also on the city's website on the main page, where you can download it electronically as well. And did want to let elders know that are not seeking reelection that I need to have your non-candidacy paperwork by, well...
You won't, because you're leaving.
The clerk's office needs to have it by December 21st. And I did want to thank everybody, too. It's a, it was a hard decision to leave. I'm looking forward to the next chapter, but I'm sad to leave Stoughton very much, so. So thank you to everybody for your help and your guidance, and it's been, it's been a lot of fun. It really has.
Great.
Thanks, Lana.
Good luck.
Thank you. This evening we have a, oh, I'm sorry, older person Boersma.
Just one other thing, thank you, Your Honor. We kind of, because of our cycle, we missed Veterans Day, acknowledgement of veterans in our community, and those veterans that have served faithfully and have served and died for our country, and I want to acknowledge them. I want to thank the veterans in this community in here for their services to our country, and didn't want to go, let it go unnoticed that we had Veterans Day this last week.
Thank you, Sid. If you've not been out to the Veterans Memorial Park, you must, you must take a trip out there and look at the pillar that the City of Stoughton sponsored, as well as all the other great things at the park. We have a presentation this evening from our visitor services department. Welcome, Susan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Susan Limata, and I'm the events and visitor services manager with the visitor services department, and I understand you have my budget in your packet. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the budget. And also, just give a little background. I'm just, I've been on the job for just over two months now and have discovered that Stoughton, the city of Stoughton chose to implement the state structured program to collect room tax and establish a visitor's services department in 2004. So the program has very strict rules to follow, and it really, the basis of the program is to, it's, the money is to be allocated exclusively for tourism and promotion and development. So the way that works is, you know, our efforts, our marketing efforts that are geared toward encouraging people to come to Stoughton and spend a night or two in one of our hotels or bed and breakfasts, or even the campground. So of the room tax money that's collected, there's a breakdown. Seventy percent goes to the visitor services department. Twenty percent goes to the Stoughton Chamber, and ten percent stays with the city of Stoughton.
So tell us about your major initiatives for this next year. How will you bring people to Stoughton? What are your plans?
Sure. Okay, so when I look back, you know, I just took this position in September, and I look back at what's happened in 2017. I see that we have a really major focus on advertising. We place ads all over the place, heavily in the Chicago market, Madison. So what I would like to do for next year is to really get the word out into a wider circle, and so to, and to have a presence. And the way I'm going to do that is to build a website, so that the Stoughton tourism, where to stay, what to do, is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So that's my, my big initiative for the beginning of the year.
That's great. You had, I think you were saying at the last chamber board meeting, five bus tours in Stoughton within the last, was that the last month or two months?
Sure. Between September 29th and October 30th, we had five tours. So typically, there's about 50 people on a bus, so that's 250 people. They came from Minneapolis, Galesville, Wisconsin, Milwaukee, Norway, and there was one other I can't think of now. But it's kind of interesting to, to welcome visitors to Stoughton. I would say of the five tours that I hosted, the people were here because of our Norwegian heritage. So they appreciate everything that we have to offer. We always include a tour of the Opera House and down to Livsrisa, of course, and then shopping in between. But what I hear people say is, "This is a gem of a town." I had no idea, so.
And that's great, and hopefully they'll come back and visit and stay longer.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Do you have questions regarding our visitor services? Older person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank Susan. I'm on the visitor service committee. I think Patrick was on there last, last year. And it's really an organization that can really create some economic conditions for our downtown areas and for our whole city. And I want to thank Susan. I think she was a great choice for the chamber and the visitor services committee that put her on there, and she'll do a great job. She, she was pretty much responsible for the art walk that we had, the first annual art walk that we had this year on June 10th of 17, and did a great job with that. And you could just see the amount of people that came to town and people that'll be coming back. And, you know, she's going to be in charge of a lot of events, and I think she'll do a great job, so I appreciate that. One other thing I just wanted to mention was, I would like to see from Tammy possibly, I think Tammy would probably be the one to talk to about this, to make sure that we're collecting that tax accurately and, you know, whether the hotels that are receiving that tax and then forwarding it on to us, I think the city administers that. And I just want to see a report on that from the last few years, where we're at, and just to make sure we're getting what we should be getting. And of course, as you know, with our Hilton Hotel coming up, that's going to create a lot more dollars coming in for the visitor services, so it can only go up from there. So I appreciate it, Susan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Questions? No. If not, thank you very much, Susan. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
All right. Our agenda then continues with the public comment period. I don't currently have anyone registered to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak at our public comment period? Nope. None of you students have anything to say about the city of Stoughton, how things are going, our budget tonight? No, you're good. All right. Pardon me? Oh, no. Okay, thank you. Maybe next time. You'll come back. So our consent agenda tonight consists of the October 24th council minutes, the October 24th committee, the hall minutes, and Resolution 155 of 2017, which is authorizing and directing the city officials to issue operator licenses to various applicants. And I'm sorry, I don't have their names up here. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda.
It's a motion by Boersma. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jensen. Would anyone wish to remove any item from that consent agenda or make an amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. We begin with a public hearing regarding our 2018 City of Stoughton operating budget. So I'll close our regular meeting and open a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding our 2018 operating budget? Either for the city of Stoughton or for the Stoughton utilities? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and reopen for the regular course of business. We have no old business this evening. Our new business begins with Resolution 156 of 2017, coming from our public safety committee. Alderman Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety brings forth Resolution 156, 2017, approving the appointment of Jennifer Joyce Wentella as the agent for QuickTrip, and I would move approval.
Second.
It's a motion by Truel, second by Jensen. Older person Truel.
This is a routine matter. What actually ended up happening, I believe, is the original applicant that was identified by QuickTrip was either not, it was not in the community. A lot of correct me on this one, but this is the current, current manager, current rep for QuickTrip.
Yes, please.
Right, so this QuickTrip was the one that was previously the PDQ, and QuickTrip had taken that one over. They had appointed somebody at that time that was like the district manager to see them through the process of moving everything over to QuickTrip. Jennifer will be the one that is at the store all the time, serving as the manager of that store.
Thank you. Any comments or questions regarding Resolution 156? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Resolution 157 of 2017 comes from our Parks and Rec Committee and Finance Committee. Older person O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 157, 2017. Resolution by the common council of the city of Stoughton approving the use of park development funds not to exceed $14,000 for a solar panel on the Nordic Ridge Park Shelter pending successful grant applications. I move approval.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Engelberger. Older person O'Connor.
Pretty self-explanatory. We're going to put a solar panel on top of the park shelter to generate electricity for the park's use and then sell it back to the utility.
Thank you. Any questions? Older person Hirsch.
From Parks and Rec, this was recommended from the Parks and Rec subcommittee, because this shelter is in the Nordic Ridge where they're putting in that splash pad. And our committee decided that if we're going to do the splash pad that's going to eat up some energy, that we would offset it or try to offset it with some solar panels, so it wouldn't be so costly for... And it's also a great project for that neighborhood, because they tried to do a lot of green development in that neighborhood, so this kind of fits right into that whole neighborhood. So I would recommend that you approve it. And the money actually is coming from park development funds that we got from the Scolin, you know, development. And so within that fund, there's actually about $25,000. And so even if we don't get the grant, there's, money's available for that, which, you know, we'd probably come back for, because we're only authorizing $14,000. And lastly, somebody else asked the last time, how long do these panels last? They're about 25 years, and the payoff time is around 10 years, so.
Thank you. Older person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is a great thing. The city should be setting an example for renewable energies, and I appreciate it, Bob, that we're doing a good job with the utilities in the city also. We should be setting an example, and I think it's a great thing, so I'm all for it.
Council President Swadley, and then Boersma.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the Finance Committee, older person Mieske had amended the motion there, and there was a question about whether there would be excess energy that would be generated there, and if there were, if that would be something that would be credited. Go ahead.
That any, that any, any funds that are generated by the solar panels that is not used at the park would be put back into the park development fund?
Does that have a possibility?
I haven't been that close to the project, but I do know that our Energy Services rep, Corey Neely, is ready to start writing the application for the grant tomorrow. So I will be talking to him, and I'll certainly raise that question. My understanding of what wouldn't be used at the park is going to be credited back somehow to the park. But, but we'll have to talk a little bit more, but it's an excellent idea.
So I guess my, to follow up on that, my question is, is that was the recommendation from the Finance Committee? It's not really reflected in our resolution here, and the question is, is should it be? And if it is, how should it be worded?
I, I think from my standpoint, I'll sit down with Corey and I'll explain to him what, what is wanted. I think there will be some, one would assume that there are going to be some excess funds there. And it would normally come back to the owner, which would be the, the city of Stoughton. Perhaps it's going to go to the city of Stoughton, and then the city is going to direct it back to the, to the parks fund. But I think we, we can certainly make it happen.
Alderman Mieske, did you wish to make an amendment to Resolution 157?
I do.
Okay.
For, I would recommend that, or I would motion that we amend to direct the city staff to apply all, all excess energy credit to the park fund, park development fund.
Second.
There's a motion by older person Mieske, second by older person Engelberger. Comments or discussion on the amendment to the motion? Older person Hirsch.
I, I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, if we can generate money back, then we can only do more good things for the community, especially for our parks. And so perhaps there's other shelters that eventually we can put more solar panels on. So I think it's, it's a very good amendment.
Okay. I'm going to have, Lana, you're going to miss this part. Could you read us back that motion, please?
Sure. I have an amendment by Mieske, an amendment to the resolution, rather, that the city staff shall apply all excess energy credit generated by the solar panels to the park development.
And the second by older person Engelberger.
Yes.
All those in favor of the amendment, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That amendment carries. Older person Boersma.
Yes, Your Honor, we have a number of existing parks already. Nordic Ridge, I think, is the most recent. And I would like to, I'd like to see this happen for other parks, too, and I'm not quite sure why. I mean, I can think of five or six other shelters that we have, and why this one is singled out. And, you know, I think it's because it's new, but I'd like to see this as a possibility for other park shelters in our community.
All right, thank you.
And I think, you know, I think the other people might be interested in it. Once we get this started, I think we should look at other parks, so.
Great. Older person Hirsch.
And just along with that, I mean, I agree wholeheartedly with older person Boersma. I think why we single out this one was because it was on the docket, and we, when we put the bids out for the shelter to be, to be built, we made sure that the roof was, could handle the, the weight of the solar panels, too. And so we would have to revisit the existing shelters to make sure that their structures could handle the solar panels. But that's, you know, the more money that we generate, that we can get funds in, it'd be good.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one other question about that, and that is, is it affected by, because some of the parks that I can think of right offhand, a lot of trees are around, under, you know, over the top of the park shelters, whether or not that makes any difference in terms of solar panels and generation of electricity?
It may. It also, what's most important is the direction of the roof, that it can capture enough sunlight, and we, again, worked with developers in the bid process to make sure that the shelter was in the right direction, so what the solar panels, if it was approved, if the solar panels went on, that it would be able to capture enough of the solar energy. And so that would be another thing that we would have to assess with current shelters, is not only the, if they're being blocked by vegetation, but also if their orientation is correct.
Director Curtis.
Yeah, I was just going to add, too. I think we've got 24 solar arrays in the system right now. Not all of them are rooftops, so it may be that we'll get Corey involved with, with Parks and Rec, go around all the sites and see what could work, and then maybe start setting out a budget, you know, in their CIP over time. But if you wanted, you could probably have a solar array at each, each one, as long as the woods, the trees do impact at the end, but they could certainly all be evaluated.
Thank you. So we have the amendment to Resolution 152 as being approved, but we'll need to go back to the original resolution. There's a motion by O'Connor, second by older person Engelberger, to approve Resolution 157. Is there further comment or discussion regarding the original motion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This motion carries. Resolution 158 of 2017 comes from our committee, the hall. Council President Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move to authorize and direct the proper city officials to approve the Stoughton Utilities 2018 budget and five-year, 2018 through 2022 capital improvement plan, also known as the CIP.
Second. Second.
It's a motion by Swadley, second by O'Connor. Council President Swadley.
Thank you again, Your Honor. So both of these were approved by the Utilities Committee and by the committee, the hall unanimously.
Thank you. Comments or questions regarding the utilities budget? All those in favor, aye? I'm sorry, we're going to do a roll call. Corrected myself real quick there. Thanks, Lana. Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Truel.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Resolution 159 of 2017 also comes from our committee, the hall. Council President Swadley.
Thank you again. I would move to approve Resolution 159, 2017, to authorize and direct proper city officials to adopt the 2018 City of Stoughton budget.
Second.
Motion by Swadley, second by Engelberger. Council President Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to, first of all, thank the presentations that we received from all the department hoods. I think they were very well done, very informative, certainly helped us understand what services that each department provides to the city of Stoughton, and what some of the challenges are in order to, you know, maintain and preserve those services. And also thank everyone that was able to attend those meetings. I know there was a lot of other meetings going on during that time period, and it's a huge time commitment for all of us here that serve and for staff as well. So thanks to all that made the meetings and for the input that each one of you provided.
Thank you. Older person Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. At your place this evening, and you previously received a memo from me, I would be offering, be offering two amendments to the budgets this evening. The first, it takes probably the simpler of the two, and that is, I would move that we add $8,657 to the fire department for the purposes of allowing the department to provide that 10% increase in stipend to the volunteers. And if there's...
Second.
Second, thank you. Within the packet that Tammy had sent out previously, and it's, again, it is at your packet or at your seat this evening, in looking at the update on the actual agreement we have with the towns for our services, there's an additional $8,657 above what was estimated in the budget. And so I would like to utilize these funds to allow Chief Wagner to, to go ahead and, and offer that 10% increase to the, to all the volunteers.
There's a motion and a second on this amendment. Council President Swadley.
Thank you. First of all, you know, kudos to older person Truel for taking the time and staff with, working with him in order to, to go through and, and come up with the funds in order to do this. I think it's important for the fire department for these stipends. We heard the challenges it is to recruit and retain people right now, and hopefully this will help in their efforts.
Thank you. Further comments or questions regarding the amendment? Older person Boersma.
Yes, I have two. I'm probably going to do this twice, but I, but I'm wondering the extent that this, this affects the fact that we have a new development, especially in the, in the, on the west side of town. When I was on council, when this was being approved, we had talked with both the fire chief and also the chief of police about whether or not that new development was going to result in needing more staff or more equipment or more facility or whatever. And it was pretty clear at that point that they, both departments felt like they did not need additional staff or equipment or whatever to handle that. And I'm just wondering to what extent that, that west side development has created a need for this, these, these recommendations that Alder Scott Truel is presenting at this point.
Sure. The stipend increase, and I'm going to start with Finance Director LaBord. I know that she worked closely with Fire Chief Wagner and myself.
Yeah, we, he had recommended this as part of his budget request for the year. We did go back over the last, I think we went back to 2011, and that should be in your memo as well. Over that time period, the cost, the Consumer Price Index had adjusted 9.7%, and staff increases over that time period as well was at 11%. However, there were changes during that time when employees started to make contributions toward their retirement, when previously that wasn't required. When discussing the matter with the chief, he had suggested a 10% increase, and at that time, we were estimating about $7,800. This is basically to help give them something, because they have not increased their wage or their stipend. He couldn't remember going, when it actually did get adjusted. So we went back to 2011 just to look at the Consumer Price Index and see what those comparisons were over time. And I think the chief's here as well.
Yeah, I'm just going to make a quick comment. This particular stipend increase doesn't, doesn't include more firefighters. It simply rewards those we currently have a little bit better. Did that answer your question, Sid?
Yeah, it's, it's just that, you know, we had, we had, this was a major point of discussion at that point, and it was, it was very, very clear that with the addition of the, the west side development, the people were not going to need additional facility.
Okay. All right, thank you. Further questions regarding this amendment? All those in favor, aye? Oh, I'm sorry. Was there someone? I didn't, older person Hirsch, I didn't see your hand, I'm sorry.
I was just going to, again, commend older person Truel for, and Tammy for scouring the budget. But also, I think this is a great thing, if we're giving our, the budget passes and our other staff rightly so gets their bump in cost of living increase. I think it's really prudent that we try to do as much as possible for our volunteers, so I fully support this.
Thank you. Older person Jensen, and then Mieske.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to, definitely want to support this, but I do have one concern. It seems like we're making a lot of unusual changes in order to come up with this money, and I want to make sure that we're going to be able to sustain this for the years to come.
I appreciate your, older person Jensen, I appreciate your comments, but I think you're talking about the next amendment that he's prepared to make.
I'm actually talking about both.
Okay. Can we talk about just the stipend right now, and then we'll get to the other ones?
There's $8,600 here, and there's, what, $7,900,000, or $79,000 on that one? So I mean, it, it would go hand in hand.
Okay. And you want to make the same comments later? Sure. Yep. Go right ahead. Yep. Go right ahead.
Alderman Jensen, the stipend, the amount that was identified, when we put the budget together for the fire department, and anticipated revenues from the towns for their portion of what they would be paying, at that time, we didn't have the exact number, because we were still putting that together, and we hadn't met with the towns. So in, in our actuality, we are collecting eighty-six-fifty-seven more than what's in the budget. We, we had a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand in the budget, it would go to actually be a hundred-and-fifty-nine, six-fifty-seven. So that money will be collected next year.
Alder Person Mieske.
Again, same as everybody else, you know, thank Scott for the work that he's done. I have a concern regarding how some of this money was, is being generated, and I'm looking specifically at the state road allotment, if you read it, you're doing estimates, it looks like a sleight of hand, and then the money that you're going to be getting from that is going to be transferred to a use that's not for roads. And I have a concern with that, because we just went over talking about debt management. We are right at this point in time, in a program where we are borrowing more money than usual to get our roads back up to specs where they need to be. And as part of that, we're then paying off, paying off that debt with not only the principal, but then also interest. And so what this is saying is, the city receives an estimate, we get a minimum amount of five-hundred-and-seventeen thousand and a maximum of six-hundred-and-sixty-one, and the city estimated that we'd be needing five-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, so we're just gonna increase it to six-oh-five to get fifty-five thousand dollars.
Yep, go ahead. I just wanted to let you know that this was the next one.
Understand this before we get going. So if there's fifty-five thousand dollars of road money allotment, shouldn't it be going to roads? And it shouldn't be going to reduce the debt, the debt limit? And then also, is that legal? Are we, or is that fraud?
I wanted to, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I wanted to bring us back to the amendment on the floor.
And this is part of the amendment on the floor? Because this is about financing for all of the, for these, for these two visions?
No, I'm sorry. The amendment clearly, and I'm gonna have Lana read it to us, because I might, may be understanding it. The amendment has to do with the stipend for the fire department first?
They're connected, because what's, what he's, what this memo is that came out of this?
Yep.
They're connected. You can't just, you cannot separate them. I cannot, I cannot in good conscience vote for this if I cannot get this question answered now.
I think we can, because let me just try it.
No, I'd like to have the Finance Director, the Finance Director, it's her job to do it.
All right.
Like to have her explain this to me, because I'm not understanding it correctly then.
Yep. No, I, I agree with you on where you're going, but this is a separate item. Tammy, could you help us separate the two, please?
Everyone should have received also in that packet that you've got tonight, a copy of the form we received from the trans-
No, I'm sorry, Tammy, I'm still talking about the amendment on the floor. Has to do with the fire stipend only. That's the only amendment to the budget we're talking about right now, is the fire stipend. Alder Person Trul.
And again, I, and perhaps that, that's, I, I thought I was making it, taking the, what I thought was the simpler half of these two. Directly, if you do nothing else, we can, we can forget about for the moment, the, the discussion about the additional police officer that I'm asking for as well. This is specifically regarding the stipend, increasing the stipend for the fire department. The funds are available, they are part of our town agreement, and as was previously stated, there, it was underestimated, and this is something that we'll get from the towns each year. So if you agree with the, the amendment that I've, I've offered, the first amendment, again, it is to add eighty-six-fifty-seven to the fire department for the purposes of increasing, again, just the stipend. Police, Tom's right, I mean, at the end of the day, the, Tammy's efforts, and I really wanna thank her again for, for all the time she put in this, and, and helping me find some of the funds. But I, I felt like the, the whole police discussion and a lot of these other dollars really are, are the next amendment that I'm going to make. If you do nothing else, I would strongly encourage you to, to support the, this one, because, again, the funds are there, they come from the township, they are for fire, for, for our EMS services.
So that, that language is in that, is this amendment? That the, the funding for this will come from the township revenues?
Yes. From the account that's actually, it actually comes from, Tammy, is this is the correct account number, right? Forty-six-two-twenty?
Yes, that is the correct count number.
All right.
Yep, and I'm sorry, but I just, I know it gets confusing, we're not to keep those two separate before we move forward. Alder Person Borsma.
Yes, and I have a relative, actually a son who works for both the fire department and is a volunteer for EMS, so I am obligated, obliged to say that although I did some discussion about this, I am, I am going to sustain from this vote.
All right, thank you. So the current amendment, I'll have Lana read the motion on the floor. Just right hand it. Yep. So I have an amendment to the motion by Trul to add eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars to the fire department budget, to allow for the 10% increase to the fires to be stipend for the volunteers, to be paid from the funds generated by the services provided to the townships for fire and EMS.
Just fire.
For fire, not EMS.
As a matter of record, Tammy, just make sure I'm giving this correct, because I believe it's account number-
Oh, I'm sorry.
It should be just fire.
Just fire, okay, I'm sorry. Yep.
No, I think I said EMS.
And, and, and it's actually account number one-hundred-dash-five-two-two-zero-zero. Again, this is in the memo, in Tammy's memo, dash-five-oh-one-two-four, which is the volunteer wages for volunteers.
And that second was by Alder Person Engelberger. Yes. Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
I abstain.
Okay, let's vote by roll.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Borsma.
Abstain.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Hartlet.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of eleven to zero with one extension. Thank you. Alder Person Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. I then would offer an amendment to authorize the police department to add an additional staff person, and the fiscal, in, in 2018, with the fiscal impact being that sixty thousand of the sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-four dollars that, that is identified in Tammy's memorandum be utilized, and we also allow the police department to transfer twenty thousand dollars from their overtime fund into the wage account as well. So effectively, we are, we are adding eighty thousand dollars to the police budget.
Second. It's a motion by Trul, second by Alder Person Engelberger. Do you want to, maybe Tammy can go through what those funds are, for folks that might be listening at home, as well as those that are, are here? If you could, Alder Person Trul.
If, if, if we could, I, I do wanna turn this over to Tammy, again, I wanna, I wanna thank her for, for the time and effort. Effectively, I had let folks know that a couple weeks ago, I was, was hoping to, to add, add this position. I believe that there's a need, I, I think, not only from a standpoint of going forward, but also all we have to do is look at the overtime that we have currently. And, and to Sid's question a couple minutes ago, I, I think it's, it's painfully obvious that the new development in town does require additional services, and that's, you know, we haven't even seen the full effect of, of some of the, of the development that's, that's been approved out of KPW, and Nordic Ridge, and some of the others. And so I think some of those things are already causing the department not to be able to serve and, and respond to all the calls that we need to. And because of some of the more serious calls, we then are, are being forced to, to utilize a lot of overtime as a part of this. And so I took the, the time to, to spend some time with Chief Leck and with Finance Director La Board, and asked them to, to take a look and try and see within their budgets where we might be able to find the funds. And again, I'd sent out the memo to you folks. With that, I would turn it over to Tammy, because again, she did an excellent job of taking a look at, one of the questions I asked was basically the status of a lot of our, our existing funds, and, and she provided us a memo last week that talked about some of the changes. And so Tammy, I'd let you walk us through both the pluses and the minuses that we've seen.
Sid, I've got you down as soon as Tammy finishes speaking.
If, if Your Honor would allow me to talk, I would like to talk.
All right, and then Tammy, okay? Sure.
Okay, just in point of background, this has not been all that long, many years ago, it's been, I think, two or three. What happened was that we had very many late discussions about Kettle Park West, and my question at the time was, I wanna be very clear about this, if we build Kettle Park West, are we going to need additional police staff? And I also included emergency staff as well. Are we gonna need it? And I recall extremely well the fact that we are not gonna need staff, we are fully, we are fully staffed to be able to handle that Kettle Park West development. It was a point of discussion for a long time. One of the points that I had raised, and I had raised it both with the chief and also with, in the, in the presence of council, was that I felt like, especially Walmart, but other, you know, the whole development was really not stepping up to what we may need for that development. And one of the hidden things that I was concerned about was the, the need for additional services, especially with police and fire. And I was assured by Chief Leck and, and by the existing, well, all three, EMT and fire, and Chief Leck, that this was well thought out, we didn't need, we didn't need to go for additional funds from, from the developer, from Walmart, or whatever, and that we were gonna be fine for the next number of years. And, and I recall that discussion very well, and that was what was, was said at, at the point. Now, if my memory is not completely correct, people can question me about that, but, and a number of people who are in council at this point, were not in council at that point, but we were assured that this was not gonna require additional staff, the development at KPW. So I just wanna raise that, I wanna make sure that everybody's aware of that. I, in, in all likelihood, unless, unless I hear something different, will not support this amendment based on what was told to me very directly about three years ago.
Thank you. I know we'll have a lot of discussion, but Alder Person Trul had asked Tammy to identify those sources that, that we'll be using for this amendment. I think that's important for the discussion.
Please.
Okay, so everyone has the memo in front of you. In working with the utility this year, they estimated what dividends we might receive in 2018. Jaman's estimates for the electric utility was fifteen thousand dollars, and for the water utility, for five thousand dollars. In the past, we had not budgeted for those dividends, and so that is something that is different than what we used to do. Also, exempt computer aid, we received notification from the Department of Revenue that we would receive fifty-eight thousand dollars in exempt computer aid, and at that time, we had fifty-three-thousand-eight-forty-one in the budget. So in order to reach that level of fifty-eight thousand of revenue that we are going to receive next year, we could add four-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. State road allotment, and in your packet this evening, you should have received a copy of what we received from the Department of Revenue as to their preliminary calculations. They are estimating that our minimum 2018 aids, as it states in the memo, will come in at five-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, and the maximum could be as high as six-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand. What I've learned over time is, these are estimates, they're not accurate. A lot of times, if you take their higher number, it's more than likely that you will not see that number, and then you're going to be short. In my methodology of looking at adding fifty-five thousand dollars, we have five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the budget, and we're slated to receive five-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand this year. That is about twenty-five thousand dollars more than we have in the budget now, and then adding another thirty thousand on top of that would bring us to that fifty-five-thousand-dollar mark. We also recently received updates on dental insurance. Our rates went up more than what we had anticipated in the budget. Those amounts equal two-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars for the general fund, there's an additional hundred-and-eighty-two dollars for the library, and sixty-four dollars for the opera house. And then with rental income, we're anticipating a decrease of eleven-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. Community Living Connections has been utilizing the youth center over the past few years, and they have notified us that they're unable to, they're terminating their agreement as of January 2018. So they're paying one-thousand-thirty-three dollars a month, so we will at least collect January, and then the rest of the year right now is a loss. We are trying to see if they're interested in renting one of the vacant spots at the annex, so potentially we could offset some of it, but there's, they have not seen the spot yet, and we have no guarantees. So totaling all of those figures, we could potentially add sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-four dollars to, to the budget. As I mentioned, I did give you some handouts this evening, and I apologize that it's all at the last minute, but I was trying to sit down today and figure out what might be helpful to you in making your decisions. Again, the transportation aid is in there showing you the minimum and the maximum. You may recall that Director Gillingham had sent out an email a while back, some potential questions to ask as to the vacancy of these positions. She also had included a breakdown of what police and fire employee costs would be, that's in your packet as well. I did look at, as of today, the overtime budget for the police department, and I know there are some grants that offset some of the overtime, but right now, the overtime is twenty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars over budget. And for sixteen, I'm sure there were some grants that offset that number, but at the end of the year, the overtime budget was sixty-five thousand dollars over budget. Also, just wanted to let you know that the tax rate has changed. I was anticipating eight dollars and seven cents. What happened was, I did not include TID increment, and as we were going through the estimates that we're receiving from all of the other entities, it turns out that we'll be reducing our tax rate three cents to eight dollars and forty-three cents per thousand. So unfortunately, people will save three dollars, but it's still a savings rather than an increase. I also included some explanations as to how levy limits are calculated, how we qualify for expenditure restraint funding, net new construction, and I know that there had been a question as to what our unassigned fund balance is. As of December 31st, 2016, our balance is three million, three-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars. Currently, our debt management policy asks that it should be between fifteen percent to twenty percent of our general fund revenues. As of that time, the, the balance was, where did I have that? Twenty-six-point-one percent, all right, I apologize, twenty-six-point-six percent of the budgeted expenditures. And I also listed what that meant for the 2017 budget and 2018 budget with numbers that we had in place. Also, just so you know, that our financial advisors recommend that use of unassigned, undesignated funds should only be used for one-time projects or emergencies, and not used to fund recurring expenditures. I've also added that page, so that you had that from the audit, and then a listing of net new construction for the past, back, going back to twenty, 2008. I found this in the system. It shows that back 2008 to 2011, we used to receive three percent for our, our, our net new construction, and then it dropped off to point-three-five, and then you can see the figures as well. And then at the very end is current debt service schedule, 'cause I know there had been some questions on that. So sorry to expand that a little bit, but I just wanted to let you know what I had given you this evening.
Thank you. I have Alder Person Engelberger, and then Alder Person Trul, and Alder Person Mieske.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to comment on Alder Borsma's position, that it's exactly what we were told about Kettle Park West, that the development wasn't gonna take any more services off of the, those budgets of the existing departments. that the development wasn't going to take any more services off of the, those budgets of the existing departments. And I didn't believe it then, I don't believe it now. I don't fault the, the department heads for pushing it that way. Sure, they can get by with it at the expense of not doing other things. I mean, that's, it's, it's common sense. When you increase population and increase development, you're going to have more services. There's no question about that. And like I say, I didn't believe it then, I don't believe it now. It's a mute point. We do need to fund more public safety, and that's exactly what Alder Truul is trying to accomplish here. So I appreciate everything Scott's doing, and I think we need to do it.
Alder Person Truul, Mayoski, and then Boersma.
Chief, I would ask if you could perhaps address a couple of the questions that were kind of in the packet, obviously kind of walked folks through, where, where you see, one of the questions that had come up and was actually in AJ's memo, was talking about some of the existing staff folks and where, where people are being used. Effectively, if you could explain the, what you see, the net effect of this position will be. Obviously, we had talked about the effect on overtime and the like, but could you provide us kind of an overview on what you see with the department and why this is necessary?
Well, to begin with, I haven't seen AJ's memo, so I don't know what that contains, so I can't comment on that. I will comment a little bit about the history of the police department. I've been back here since 2010, and I think the American attest to this. I've asked for staff every single year that I've been here, oftentimes for multiple staff positions. And I will clarify the comments that I made during the Kettle Park West discussions, is that can we handle the increase? Well, yes, we have handled the increase, but historically, we've always been short of staff and underfunded for the type of calls that we get in this community and also for our population. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified there. It's always been the case. And, and quite honestly, I did address that privately with Alder Person Boersma when those comments were raised, and explained to him what exactly I meant when we said, can we handle additional calls for service on a larger development? Yes, we can. Didn't change the fact that we were short of staff from the very beginning, prior to the development even going in. So with that comment, when it comes to the discussion about overtime, overtime, quite honestly, is dependent on circumstances. It has every year. Depends on the amount of staff that we have available, depends on whether we have anybody out due to an injury, family medical leave. We are very tightly staffed, and any vacancy usually requires overtime to fill it. Even commonly occurring vacancies such as vacation time and, and other off time that's required for us to provide to the staff. So the, the question of overtime becomes, well, can we tighten our belt and, and come in? And that, well, yes, we can, as long as we have a good year, as long as we don't have additional staff going out for an injury, or we don't have some serious incidents occurring. When it comes to staffing level, even though by statistics, we're, we're short for the size of the community we have from the national average, I don't use that very often. That's why I haven't kind of presented that very much. But what I do use is the type of calls we get and the number of calls we get for service. And I gave the example previously in budget discussions about the fact that we see an RPM shift, that literally our officers are going call to call. They have no discretionary time to do things like traffic enforcement, neighborhood patrolling, and so forth, because they are going from call to call. We're seeing this occurring in a much larger percentage in the day shift as well. And those are concern times for me, is that the public, I, I get requests almost on a daily basis for traffic or patrol functions or things like that, and then so it, it drives the amount of staffing they get. Regarding our overtime budget this year, we have at least $16,000 already reimbursed for overtime expenses, and we have more money coming in from grants that we participated in. The traffic enforcement we did this year was considerably more than we've been able to do in the past, and that is a direct result of getting grants from the Department of Transportation. That's going to continue next year, so that, that has helped us considerably. But our staffing levels have been low for a continual amount of time, and they're going to continue to, to be low, and they're going to continue to be a concern. And it, it's driven by everything, including, yes, development, but more importantly, it's driven by the type of calls that we have to go on on a daily basis.
And I guess one just quick follow-up question, Chief, and that is, when you and I talked, are you comfortable with the idea that if we add another staff person, that we will be able to, again, everything else staying even, that we are able to, that we'll be able to be offset by $20,000 in, in overtime?
Again, if, if everything works out and everything remains even, I, I think we could do that. The thing to keep in mind, though, is the time it takes to recruit and train and have an officer available. So even if we started in March, by the time they would be ready for a regular patrol, it'd probably well into July. So, and again, we're not anticipating any great outages of officers due to the family leaves or anything next year, not like we've experienced this year in the past. But it, again, it has, it, it all has to fall into place for, to us to be comfortable with that level of funding.
Thank you. I have Alder Person Mayoski, Boersma, Swadley, and Reeves.
Back to my question about the state road allotment, that's all, allotment. Attorney Dragmeat, is that fraud, as that reads?
I, I can't address it. I just don't know enough about what's going on with it, so I have no idea what's happening with it.
I, I did contact the Department of Transportation. I asked them how they currently go about evaluating if communities are using that funding directly for road improvements. He said that maybe about three years ago, they used to go out and audit, but they haven't, they don't do that anymore. They assume that if people are improving roads, and we do improve roads by borrowing funds, that those funds are ultimately going for that purpose. The general fund, though, has been the place where the funds have always gone. They've always been co-mingled with the operation of the city.
So let me ask you this. What does that sound like to you?
Frankly, where I used to work, that's the same thing we were doing. It went into the general fund. The organize, the city was utilizing borrowed funds or funds that were designated for the improvements of roads. That's what you're doing. You're, you've got street projects totaling $3, $4 million a year that you're utilizing.
Yes, and part of that point that I made was that of that $3 and $4 million, we are spending how much in interest on that principal that we're borrowing?
You could also say that what's in the general fund is offsetting your debt service. You've got $2.6 million in the budget that you're paying off principal and interest.
This may be true, however, that general debt service is coming from general property taxes, where this is coming from a specific, from a specific program for a specific need. And I, I'm, I'm finding a moral problem with that, of how, how we're, we're looking at how we're using that money. And when we have, we're, we're borrowing money beyond what we would need, $55,000 more than what we would need, and therefore, we're spending a lot more over, over, overtime of what that cost would have been initially. So, you know, and then on top of that, that's this year. Where is that money coming from next year, then? Are we going to do the same thing?
This is for 2018 that we're talking about. Yeah.
2019, whatever you want, semantic you want to use. Where's the money come, the $55,000 coming from the year after that? And then I have another question. In the packet you sent out, what is the police and fire employee cost we have on here? We have a, an X, we have the $80,288, and then below that, there's another $14,000, but part, a large part of that I see is the fourth-year hourly rate?
This is something that Director Gillingham put together. I'd have to ask her.
Well, let's do that.
Sure, AJ's here.
Tom, can you repeat your question, please?
In the packet that we have?
Yes.
You put out a sheet that says the 2018 police and fire employee cost? And you have the, the basic wage structure on the top half? And then below that, there's another $14,288.
Yeah, let me give you what's there. We have $2,800 in uniform, as you can see, as a line item, $500 for the weapon. And then we have field training officer. This is adding the additional cost of the officer that would be training that individual. So there's training for three months, which would be six pay periods, and I put the extra 50 cents in there, which comes out to the 224 additional cost. And then the FTO officer, fourth-year hourly rate is 3167, so that's a grand total of 449 hours.
That's the question I have. What, what does, what does that mean, the fourth year? What is, what is that? That's his time for training the other person?
Correct. That is correct. So that's your cost.
Okay, so, thank, thank you. That, that was the question I needed.
Perfect.
So my, my question then is, we're eight, we're $18,000 short of what you need. I'm just, I'm just adding numbers up here. Go ahead.
But we're not. Again, if you look at my memo again, and I can, I'll turn it back to the chief in terms of when salary will actually come online, when, when the employee will actually come on next year.
Well, first, I want to clarify what the training costs are. The field training officer, that is an additional cost that the city bears. That training officer is training recruit during a three-month period, but they're also responding to their normal calls. That's part of training. And so that is not an additional amount of money. It is just, it is built into their regular salary, so it's not an additional funding that's necessary.
Thank you. I'm sorry, my, my computer is dying. Next, I had a question from Alder Person Boersma.
Just a, a little more history in that, I'm, I'm doing this not because I don't think that police officers especially are valuable, they really are. What happened, what happened when I, when I was concerned about Walmart, especially in Kettle Park West, is that I determined that, and I was fairly new on council, that I would take a, I would take a trip to a number of places that were similar to us with Walmarts being built. And I, I did two, two places specifically because I, because they're close to Stoughton. And so I, I contacted both Sun Prairie, and I, I just talked to people over there. And my question, my questions were multitude, but the question, the primary question is, what, what kind of things would you recommend to us as a city as we develop, especially in, in light of needing more, more services like police, fire, and EMT? And the response from Sun Prairie was, you know, you're going to need more, you're going to need more staff if you're going to have a, a development the size that we're anticipating for, for Walmart here in, in Stoughton. So then I contacted the chief of police of Monona and asked him whether or not they had been contacted about it, because they had, they had the closest Walmart to the city of Stoughton. And the police chief said, how are you doing for services? He said, do you need more services for police and fire, because you're going to definitely see an increased need? And the, the police chief from Monona said to me, how are you doing with that? And I said, I think we're understaffed in terms, you know, we're probably understaffed like every other department in small towns like this for, for, especially police officers. And he said, he said, we had worked out an arrangement with Walmart that we would get additional money, and that was specifically for transportation costs for elders to get to the facility. And he said, I can, I, I remember what, what he, he said, you'll see that in the next three or four years, you're going to be having people come back to you requesting more, more staff for public safety. And he's, I remember the, I remember the comment he made to me, that you, you can get additional money from Walmart for additional services if you can prove that you're going to need them, and you're going to need them in the future. And I, and, and he said, don't be a bunch of country bumpkins. That was his, his, his said, he said, build in costs of police and fire services that are going to be additional requirements, because I can guarantee that in the future, you're going to be, you're going to have a request from, you know, from your emergency services people for additional staff, whether they say you're going to need them now or in the future. And I think this, this for me, I, I have to say, I was frustrated when, when I had to ask that the developer kick in more money for additional services based on my analysis of having gone out and did a survey, a small survey of, of two, two corresponding cities that had the same issues. And I, and, and I'm, this has come to fruition, and I understand that we probably need more services in terms of police, but it's, 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 it's something that if we, as we develop as a city, and I, and at my home, we have this thing called, this is a learning moment. This is a learning moment, that when we talk about development, we need to, we need to be very, very careful that we look at all the hidden costs that are going to come up in a matter of two or three years. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I have Alder Person Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few comments and then a question. Certainly Alder Person Boersma brought up at the time, and, and, you know, many of us agreed with the information that you received. At some point, though, we do have to take care of business, take care of our citizens, protect people in our community and from other communities that are coming here. So I think now's a good time to do that. So we have to, we have to go forward. We, we can't, we can't dwell on the past, so. You know, a couple other comments that were made on the, on the budget. Unfortunately, on the police breakdown, I think that was a meeting that Alder Mayoski had to leave. He had an emergency that night. We did cover that sheet that night, so it was in the packet previously. So I just wanted to point that out, so everyone understood that. You know, this isn't something new, it was something that we discussed that night. My question is, on, on the overtime for the chief is, do the, the current officers, do they depend on that overtime? I mean, what's the feeling going to be if, if, if they have to cut back on their hours? Are they relying on that? Because, you know, we certainly had a lot of discussion about recruitment and, and retaining officers in general, not only in Stoughton, but, you know, throughout the United States. And, and I want to be careful before we say we're, we're going to cut police overtime, that we understand that, you know, it's people's livelihoods, and if, if that's part of their budget at home to pay their bills, I'm a little bit leery about doing that unless I'm certain that it's not going to cause any, any challenges for the department.
Well, first and foremost, we always remind our staff that they can never depend on overtime as part of their base salary, because it is not. The way we conduct overtime, it is for the department need and the needs of the community first and foremost, and that's always secondary. We're not, we don't guarantee any level of overtime for any officer. In general, even at, you know, $84,000, that's a lot of overtime to be dispersed between roughly 12, 14 people. So, I mean, it's, it's not the entire staff that, that generates the overtime. It's primarily the patrol staff and investigators that generate the, the larger percentage of, of the overtime to begin with. I, I don't see that as affecting their bottom line much. We'll make adjustments that we need to. I mean, we'll run lean where we have to, and, and where we can, can do that without affecting our services. But I, when you look at the fact that if we can have another officer available for at least six months out of the year, that will put a, a dent into the, the num, the, the shift coverage that would normally be taken up with, with overtime.
Would you say that the majority of officers, do they welcome the overtime, or is it kind of a burden for them?
Well, it's, it's a double-edged sword. You know, you'll have some officers that are probably a little more hungry for overtime than others, but for the most part, it's, it's actually difficult for us to do a call-in at times. For example, quite honestly, when we have an in custody arrest, we have to transport that, an individual to Madison to jail. That's about a, you know, hour and a half round trip by the time they go through the jail process and everything else. Usually requires us to call somebody in, and we'll go quite deeply into the list before we'll get somebody that will respond to, to one of those requests. And that's also the same in regards to, you know, scheduled overtime on the, on the schedule that's a result of either vacation or somebody that's a result of either vacation or somebody being out. There usually ends up every month being a percentage of shifts that aren't filled by volunteer overtime that are filled through mandatory overtime, which requires the officer to stay over and continue their continuous shift.
Okay. Thank you. And just one final point. I think throughout the budget process, there's been a number of questions and really good ideas that everybody's had, whether it's how we should be using our transportation fund or what our process budget should be, or, you know, what should be required if there's a new position request. And what I'd like to do is maybe at a future meeting, or perhaps at a finance committee meeting, sit down and talk about some of those ideas so we don't lose sight of them for next year's budget. So we're not going to solve all them problems tonight. You know, we're here tonight to vote on the budget, and that's what we need to do. But those thoughts and ideas shouldn't be forgotten. So if you have any, you know, maybe you could forward them, you know, to the clerk or to the finance chair, and we can follow up on them discussions.
Thank you. Alder Person Reeves.
Tammy, I just was looking for some clarification and see if I misunderstood something. It seems to me when you were talking about, and I don't know if it was best practice or someone we report to, that there's a risk in using funds from a one-time fund, as in the $55,000 for future ongoing personnel. Did I misunderstand? Is that?
Yeah, it was more or less using your undesignated fund or your reserve fund for one-time. If you're going to utilize those funds at some point, they suggest that you use them for a one-time project, something that's non-recurring like operations. Operations is a recurring expense that's always going to happen.
So, and that is, where does that information come from? That's what I'm trying to, is that a reporting agency or just a best practice?
It comes best practice from our financial advisors, Springstead.
So we essentially, we would be doing what they would advise against, right? Am I understanding that?
No, no, you're not.
Okay.
You're utilizing anticipated funds from aides that we receive from the state.
So I'll give you a quick example. So if we had, for example, the Admiral Ashbore, we knew we were going to have an issue with that. So if we wanted to for a one-time use, we could tap the fund balance in order to help deal with that issue. You wouldn't do it for payroll because you're going to employ that person for multiple years.
I think I understand, though, if I could interject where Alder Person, what Alder Person Reeves is asking. Because the, and it's my question as well, so I'm going to go ahead and ask it. Because the road allotment is a state allotment. That's not guaranteed year from year, year to year. And the amount of that road aid is not guaranteed year to year, unfortunately. Wish it was, but it's not. So what I hear you asking is, is there a risk at using personnel costs, at funding personnel costs with a revenue that's not guaranteed year from year?
That's true. That's correct. Yes.
All right. I have Alder Person O'Connor, Hirsch, and Mieske.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly I want to agree with Greg that we have been lately staffed for an extended period of time. And I'd like to say that Alder Borzeman is wrong, but I can't do that because we have no information. I don't know if KPW is driving up calls. I don't know if that's true. I don't know if it's true that development in other places is driving up calls for service. AJ had a very distinct memo where she talked about where we need more information and a study to look at those things. Do we have our personnel distributed properly? We don't really know. I think having a study, and I'm not talking about an expensive out-of-house study, but something statistically done in-house, I think would be very valuable. We've heard about the ratios. They are worthless in terms of officer-to-population ratios. And the overtime, you know, you're exactly right. We essentially have no control over it, and I don't see where a 4% addition of personnel is going to result in a, what, 40% decrease or 20% decrease in overtime? I just don't think those numbers work out. But probably just as important is also in AJ's letter, she talked about how we did do a study, and we're underpaying our current staff. And I don't see how we can go ahead and add staff when we're not taking care of our current staff. I'm going to go with no.
Alder Person Hirsch.
I'm going to support this effort. And I guess just to clarify, maybe Tammy or Scott, what? The total amount that we're, I guess, we have like the $65,000 that we're kind of working with. And with, if they're not coming on until March, that would be about 63,7 is the total amount that we need for the rest of the year, based on the numbers that AJ put together, if you do it by month. So we have that covered without even going, touching overtime if, in fact, we get the right, you know, Department of Transportation allotment. And so I'm just kind of, you know, and I understand Alder Person's, Mieske's concern, but I also know that I just, the way I do budget in my own business, you put it in, you know, it's as added as the general fund. Doesn't mean that this is definitely earmarked for that. It just means that it's added in the general fund, right? You're not earmarking this allotment for that. It's just an added revenue stream, if I understand right. So it's not like we're taking state road allotment and earmarking $55,000 to police officers. That's...
It's just going into the general fund as a revenue.
Right. And because we're paying over $3,004,000 roads anyway, so this is just a little offset. Okay. I just wanted to clear, I guess I support this. I think we have to move forward, and next year, we just have to be really smart with our budgets and start early and try to figure out other ways to cut costs if this isn't, you know, if there's other things that we need to fund.
Thank you. Alder Person Mieske, and then Johnson.
I just have a couple of questions. First for Tammy. So if we vote on this and it carries, how much wiggle room is left in the budget then?
How much wiggle room?
Yeah. How much extra funds do we have left in the?
None that I'm aware of.
We're maxed out.
This is taking advantage of everything that we are aware of as of this date.
Okay. So with that, I'd like to ask Director Cunningham to come up to the podium. I'd like to ask her a couple of questions.
Gillingham?
Gillingham, excuse me.
No, the Cunningham, but I know Gillingham.
I see her so few times. Forget her name.
It's a ham.
With that being said, Tom, there's a couple of things that I'm concerned about as well, coming from the HR side. Any employees that are switching that have a qualified event, we typically have some wiggle room in the budget because in the past, we have budgeted for all employees at the family rate. We have now budgeted every employee at what they elected in 2017. So you're talking a potential hit of, I was just sitting back there doing the numbers, $8,400 for anyone that has a qualifying event, which is birth of a child, a marriage, divorce, death, where they would be going from single to family, or possibly a positive back to the budget if somebody goes from family to single. But more of what we see here is the addition of a spouse coming on or a child being born. So that's an $8,400 hit to the budget per person. And then my only other concern that I just wanted to bring up, I want to be clear to the chief, I don't have an opinion one way or the other in regards to the police. I'm just trying to, through the memo that Pat O'Connor was talking about, make sure that we're looking at and asking the correct questions and making sure that our ratios are correct and that we're staffed appropriately. So it was more of a cost-benefit analysis for the positions as we move forward. We talked about that last time, saying that that's an exercise that we should be going through just like any private business would require you to do so. My concern right now, just in the recruiting going on for the clerk's position, in talking with Springstead and looking at the applications that have been coming in, for us to be able to recruit a clerk with experience is going to cost us an additional $10,000 to $15,000 over where we're currently at for 2017 budgeted. So there's a definite hit that's going to be to the budget there because we're saying we want a clerk that's coming in that has the competencies at the level of Lana. And what we've been given is about $60,000 minimum that we would need to be paying for that position in just salary. So those are my points. And then my only other one, my last one, being just the ongoing costs. I'm looking at approximately $84,000, not taking into consideration those training costs that I had talked about before, for costs, again, that'll reoccur in 2019. And I'm just very concerned, being an HR director, if we're not going to have the growth to support that position, how are we going to pay for that? And is that going to be a reduction in staff where I'm laying somebody off? So I just want you to think about those things as you're going through the process. And, you know, I just hope you make the best decision possible, but I want you to hear my concerns. Thank you.
Alder Person Johnson, and then Kittleson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with Pat. I do think we need not only one police officer, but I think we need two. Working at someplace, we're always short-staffed. It wears on people, especially the positions that they're in. You don't want them to be stressed. However, I don't agree with how we're piecemealing it. And I think people a couple of times have asked how we're going to pay for this in 2019, and there wasn't anything that was really decisive that has come out. I do know that we're going to have some other personnel, probably things that are coming on, like she said with the city clerk and everything like that. One of the other questions that I kind of thought of, and I'm new at this, so I don't know if we can do this. Since we have a hard time with the budget getting people as far as a payroll, is there a way in April that we can do a referendum to increase our taxes to get more police officers on board? Because it's kind of funky right now. We're lowering taxes, but people aren't going to understand that because I have a hard enough time understanding it. If we're going to be, can we do something like that, a little bit creative, a little bit outside the box?
Sure you can.
And then I would also, I know we need it now, but I just, if this is something, this amendment that can wait until we maybe can do something a little bit creative and not necessarily vote on it now, why can't we vote on this like in three months from now when we have more statistics? Or we can do maybe a referendum and put that out there to the citizens and not just have it be us deciding at this point? Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Kittleson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Question, maybe it's for you, Tammy. If we vote for this amendment, we want it in, and we don't actually hire the police officer, can we do that and then have this money? Because we're kind of doing a trial run. We're not even sure we're going to have the money for next year. But I think a big issue that I see with the city budgeting, there's no forecast. I mean, we're doing 2018. We're not even thinking about 2019 or 2020. So to me, it would make sense to work for it, see how the money lays out, don't actually do the hiring. But then you would see if the money's going to work or not work. To me, it'd be safer than having somebody come on staff, and at the end of the year, I'm sorry, you know what? 2019, we're not going to have it. I mean, I see a big, it seems to me kind of strange that we have the chief of police here. We have a former one there. But yet, they're always saying they've asked every year. But yet, when we get our line items in our budget, we don't see that asked for that. And I think that's been a question on other people on the council, is that where are all these line items that have kind of like, it looks like they disappeared? So is that a way to do that? We could vote for this amendment and not actually hire till 20, middle of 2018?
I'm trying to recall if, once it's in the budget, if you, I know it has to go through personnel, but I thought, does the council also have to authorize that? Usually if it's in the budget, you can move forward and do the hiring, I thought.
But what I'm saying is I want to protect ourselves from the hire to make sure we have the money.
You want to adjust the budget, but you don't want to necessarily hire the person?
Hire it for this year.
AJ, how's it worked in the past? If there's money in the budget for a position?
Then we move forward and we hire. But that hiring is handled not by the city, that is handled through our PFC, Police and Fire Commission, for regular officers. So once it's in the budget, it's an allocated position to be hired. So it does not go through personnel.
So we wouldn't be able to protect ourselves from actually spending that money?
No. No. That moves right to the commission at that point, and they have authorization to hire.
So then we're going to have to think of, as other people's using the words, creative ways to have money sit there for a possibility of something in the future?
I would not have the expertise for that. I would have to look to, I guess, the mayor or maybe math on that.
More and more communities are looking at referendums. Not all communities are successful in operating a referendum.
What I'm asking for is to somehow build a little bit of a savings account. So you have a little bit of an idea what the actual financial impact is going to be.
I do know you can't tax people for monies you're not going to use.
Right. That's true.
Alder Person Truel had a statement.
Yeah. And again, just back to kind of the dollars and cents. And is, based on talking to the chief, we were assuming that even if we started the process January 1, the earliest someone would come on would be at the end of the first quarter. That's why in the course of my memo indicated that the salary cost would be in the order of $60,000. If, as you heard this evening, we don't really have to recapture the extra $14,000 in fourth-year training for the field training officers, the additional cost then for the uniform, the weapon, and the first three months, if we have to include that, we're talking about $3,500. So the net cost of bringing this person on next year, if we start right away and then coming on roughly April 1, is actually about $63,000. And so what we were looking to do originally, that's where I wasn't sure how we captured that extra $14,000 number that was in AJ's memo. That's why my math was working on the $60,000, 60 of the 65 that Tammy had identified, and then allowing the department to move $20,000 if we need to out of overtime into their regular wages.
I have Alder Person O'Connor, then Kittleson, and then I'd like to make a quick comment, too.
Well, I guess just for something that Alder Kittleson talked about was, why don't we hear about all the budget requests right from, that the department heads have submitted? And essentially, in all the departments or cities I've worked for, that was a process that you'd submit your request to the mayor, and then they'd do their whittling because otherwise there'd be too much sticker shock. I mean, it's pretty poor department head that can't think of a way to reasonably spend money. And so then the mayor typically goes about and does a little bit of whittling, and this is what we can afford, this is what we can do. So I guess that's why we don't hear about all the requests.
Alder Person Kittleson?
Yeah, I'll just be fairly quick here. I understand that part where it's got to be, but it seemed like it's been so many years that it's been asked for. So I would think that something after a while in the private sector, it's, I'm just going to go to that. I have to kind of look out for that. And you kind of set yourself up for in two years or three years, instead of always sweeping it under the rug, I'm actually going to bite the bullet and I'm going to do that. My other concern on this part here, if we use the $55,000 from the road allotment, what happens if that takes a huge hit? And we don't get as much money back? Then how do we cover that aspect of it? I'm all for it, Scott. I mean, I really appreciate all the work you did, and I'm all for this extra police officer. I know from personal experience, living down by Beyond Park, making phone calls about activities at Beyond Park, we're routinely told, we'll get there when we can. It's not a priority. So I see the need for the police officer, but I'm just a little bit worried about the state road allotment total coming in to support it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Similar, my thoughts are similar to some that have already been expressed in that, you know, budgets are estimates, and we do our best job when we put out our best estimates, just like the estimates that come from the state. They're just estimates. They don't always come true. We wish they did, but they don't. So while the road state aid looks like they're going to give us more, there's not a real guarantee that it's going to be more next year or that it's going to be more the year after that or the year after that. So that's where my concern comes. I've always been very conservative in that. I certainly appreciate and value our public service, just like I value all of our departments. But unless there's a sustainable revenue source, it's difficult to put that in a budget that we're going to hire someone if we don't know that that revenue source is going to be there again next year and the year after. When you hire... be there again next year and the year after. When you hire someone in part-time, say you hire them in January or in July instead of January, you save that first year, but that next year, they're going to want to get paid all year. So, you've got, again, to your planning, you have to plan, how are we going to pay for it the next year if we just brought them in part of the year? When you talk about overtime, boy, I get it, overtime, there's no guarantee that that could be little or that could be a lot. It kind of depends on what's going on. It depends on what's happening in the community. It depends on what's happening on the force. If someone gets hurt, what if two people get hurt? What if you've got babies? And we have young officers now, and we're excited to have young officers and all that, that new energy that they have. But they also have young families. So, and that does require overtime to pay for them to enjoy some time with those new families. So, I appreciate the work that you've put together, Alder Person Truel and Tammy. I would just caution. Alder Person Johnson?
I'm going back to my referendum thing. If we ask for, and I don't know how all the situation happens, if we were asking for $100,000 for a referendum, if we have 12,000 citizens, it's a little over $8 your person. I'd be more than happy to give $8 more in my taxes or anything if it means another person and a half at the police department. So, I'd really, I'm going to be voting no for this, because I think there's a different way that we can go about asking our citizens to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Hirsch, and then Engelberger.
Thank you. Alder Person Johnson, this was brought up a couple of meetings ago, and I think Lana explained to us that although referendums are great, they take a lot of education and time, so it would be, we don't have enough time to do it this year. So, this would be another year.
We could potentially do it in the fall. We could potentially do it in next fall.
Okay, in the fall. Okay, so, with a lot of education in it, but just not this spring election?
Correct.
Okay. I forgot about next fall election.
Yeah. Further comments? Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to vote in favor of the amendment, and I hope everybody does. Question for Tammy. With this amendment, is this a balanced budget?
The current number would not be the accurate number. I was just kind of plugging numbers in. So, if the, it will balance, yes. There will be no additional property tax required. The amount of the total budget, though, will change. It will increase, depending on what you determine. So, I do have those numbers calculated.
So, it is a balanced budget?
Yes, it is.
And, you know, this is a city with a lot of people working here. Year after year, we have people coming, going. We've got a clerk right now that's going, we have to fill a position. We're going to have a period of time where we're not going to have a clerk. There's probably going to be other situations like that throughout the year. So, there are, this happens every year. People come and go. We don't use all the revenue that we have budgeted in a lot of cases. It's flexible. Things are plugged in different places every year by our financial people. Tammy does a good job of it. And, you know, as far as do we budget out more than one year? We have an SIP that we, all of our cap, or CIP, I'm sorry, capital equipment budget, you know, we look at things many years out. Utilities does things 20 years out in a lot of cases. You know, this isn't rocket science. I'm going to vote for this. I think we'll be coming up with the money in the future. Yes, we probably are going to need a referendum at some point, basically because the state is not following through on allowing municipalities and other entities out there to fund themselves for proper revenue. I'm going to vote yes on this.
Thank you. Alder Person Truel, and then Reeves.
I just want to basically say a couple of things here, and that's, when I started looking, my first thought was to talk to Tammy about open positions and look to try and see where there may be other dollars within our budget. I was excited, though, when I talked to her, because effectively, the dollars that we've identified here are found money. Again, you'll see that they're better information. And so, we've had a chance to try and identify maybe some things that were, that, conditions that have changed even over the course of the last month. But I hope you also see that, you know, Tammy's first thought as a part of this, and I made sure we brought out the numbers too, is that not just talk about the areas where we have some possible gains, and that's, you know, she identified over $79,000 that are gains from our budget back, when, was put together back in October, but also identified the fact that there's potentially $13,600 in unexpected costs. And so, that's how we ended up with the net numbers here. I think we've got great staff here. I think if we work with the staff, I'm confident we can find ways to prioritize and look for funds for this position going forward. I think one of the most disappointing things, I would think, from a standpoint of a department head, is continuing to commit each year and ask for funds and ask for new people, and being told, yeah, I agree with you, we definitely need it, but we can't afford it. I had mentioned at a previous meeting that I think just as we have our CIP to talk about some of our capital programs, I think we need to develop a long-term plan for staffing, for some of these additional requests. And whether it's Brett Abar asking for an additional forester, or the library asking for additional staff, or, again, the police chief asking for it, I think we need to find a way, as a community, to try and identify a longer-term plan. We've grown. We're going to continue to grow. We do need to add staff. I think one of the, one of the things that we do need to look at is the possibility of going to referendum next fall and looking at, you know, perhaps we could identify those other positions that we do need in the community. All I'm telling you is, it's my belief that, one way or another, we're going to pay more for our police services next year. If we don't fund this position, I virtually guarantee that we will pay more in overtime next year, just in, with the new development that we have seen. And so, I thought it made more sense to go this way. And I hope that, I realize that the funds that we're identifying are just next year's funds. But next year, I believe we'll need to take a look at it again. But I hope you will consider the fact that we have found a way potentially here that doesn't change any other services or any other discussions that we had before this evening. And we found the funds to be able to add, again, take care of, hopefully take care of our firefighters who have not had, have not seen increases in the past, and potentially to take that next step in the police department. So, I encourage you to support it, but I certainly understand all the questions and the concerns, because it's a tough issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Reeves, and then O'Connor.
Well, we're making some assumptions that I'm really struggling with. And I think one is, we're making some bets about when the position's going to be hired and how we're going to piece it together, you know, depending on if they're hired in January or March. But the piece that also is very concerning is we are going to have to fill a city clerk. And I think there's no secret that how important that position is and the quality that we need. For one, I probably would never have been able to function since I've been Alder Person without Lana. So, I'm very concerned about who we're going to get in that position and how we're going to pay for it. And I don't like the idea of depleting our checkbook and then having no wiggle room for one of the most important positions, and that doesn't take away from the importance of our police officers. But that's a question I don't feel like I got an answer to, like, where is that money going to come from if we have to pony up more money? And so, I'm just, I'm not sure that I can support this, just because I think that's an unknown, and I'm very concerned about depleting our checkbook.
Thank you. Alder Person O'Connor.
A question for AJ again. We did our compensation study, and I think it identified groups of employees that were significantly below market.
Correct.
And what is our shortfall on getting our current staff up to market rate?
We had a meeting with Personnel, and we had Springstead onsite. That is one of the projects that we're working on right away in first quarter. I just went today and just counted up the number of employees that are below midpoint. And there's over 25 employees below midpoint. And midpoint is what we consider market. So, I can't give you a ballpark cost-wise, but I can tell you some of those were at absolute min, and the rest of them fell below midpoint.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alder Person Hirsch.
Oh, back to AJ. I believe when we asked you about your budget, that you actually put those potential costs in your budget projections for this, because I remember asking you that question a few weeks ago, that all those staff to bring people up to the Springstead study, you actually put that in the budget was part of your, so you're not going to be asking for more money, is what I think that.
What you'll be hearing in 2019 is absolutely, and absolutely asking for more money.
In 19, but not this current budget.
Correct. I can't say right now that in 18, I won't be having to come forward and say, we're running into situations where employees are getting offers elsewhere for more money. Because what we found out from Springstead is by not increasing over the past two years, the actual study itself, the wage scale, we've fallen over 5% behind market. So, what we're considering midpoint, as I talked about last time, is already below market.
Okay. So, how are these other communities funding if everybody's like up against the same kind of weird, can't raise taxes? How are they funding above market if Stoughton can't, just because we're not growing, but I mean?
Well, for example, I can use McFarland. They have more money than they know what to do with. And so, they're not only doing an increase to their wage scale, but then they're doing this step. And that's similar to what I sent to you in the memo in regards to next steps for the compensation plan. The biggest thing is, we talk a little bit about pay for performance, we don't have the money to do it. That's one of the major things. Same thing with, do we have the money that it takes to keep the compensation study, the wage scale at market? And we're falling behind. So, that's not including giving somebody a step for meeting expectations. So, we don't have that, back to Pat's question, we have to figure out where do we need to right-size those employees, and where do they really belong in the scale? And that's what I plan on bringing back to you, is saying we need X amount to bring the employees to where they belong.
So, that wasn't in your budget, even though?
No, absolutely not. What we said is we've moved everybody to minimum.
But so, for 2018 budget, you did not put in their extra money to bring people up to step, to the step and to get them up to?
No. What we stated is they're getting a 2.25% increase for the wage scale. So, the wage scale increases by 2.25, the employee stays at the same step. There's no step change.
So, when I asked you that question a few weeks ago, I guess there was a miscommunication because I wanted to make sure that you weren't going to come back and ask for more money if there wasn't going to be money in the budget.
No. What I would come back and ask for more money would be in the event that an employee is potentially leaving or we're not at market. So, I mean, what I put in the budget is what we need for a 2.25% increase for all employees.
Okay. So, then there was a miscommunication.
Yeah, across the board.
It also brought a couple of leadership team members to market.
Right. We have, we had a couple of adjustments as well, because the Springstead study last year brought all of leadership to midpoint. We had a couple of employees that are not on the same as the city, which is the library, bringing them up to midpoint as well. So, that was in the budget. There's nothing that I've proposed that is not in the budget. What I'm telling you is with Springstead, we want to find out where employees really belong in the scale. They're not at the correct, I can't say everybody's at the correct step. They've been brought into the scale. That's it.
I think you need to stay there, Alder Person O'Connor.
And I think, my recollection is, is that in our discussions, either on Personnel or here at the council last year, was that we couldn't do that. We, there was a plan to bring along, along with the department heads making their market, but we couldn't because it was expensive.
It was too expensive. That is correct. We were not able to fund it. Okay? Anything else?
I think we're good for right now.
One more question for her.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I need to call on you officially?
I just want.
Council President Swadley.
So, yeah. One of the discussions we haven't had as a council yet, and I know there's been some talk in Personnel about what we're going to do with Park and Recreation. We have a position opening there. You know, there's an option or an opportunity, depending on how you want to look at it, to take that position and restructure it. What has the conversation been at Personnel?
Personnel instructed me to meet with the departments and come up with options. So, I've already held meetings with Tom, the director, and Dan. And then we've also held meetings with Director Abar and Pat Groom, and I'm coming up with options for you. But the number one option right now is status quo, because of looking at the assessment of the workload and the existing directors. So, like I said, I'm looking at it, but I have not seen any opportunity there.
Okay. And the reason I bring that up is one of the concerns I'm hearing is that we may not have any flexibility as we get into next year. And we have an example of one right there that we haven't really made a decision on. And as Alder Person Engelberger said, you know, the unfortunate reality of the situation is, is we do have people coming and going. And it took us, I don't know, six months to hire an IT director this year. There was, you know, certainly some savings there. And more than likely, that'll occur in other positions, which if there is a gap, you know, I believe that will be covered.
I disagree on that one in that I'm looking at what's happening in the market. And the clerk's position is a perfect example of that, supported by what we learned from Springstead, in that we're looking at potentially $10,000 to be able to find somebody with the appropriate level of experience. So, you're talking an increase there. And then the same thing I'm having when I'm looking at, we just had a lineman leave. You know, what is it going to cost to fill that position as well? And I realize that's a separate budget, but it's the same type of situation where, as we're hiring people in, we're not being able to bring them in lower. I'm having to bring them in at market, which is then causing compression with the existing staff.
Yeah, I understand that. And we've had this conversation. And I have a business, and I know how the labor market is. It's more challenging now than I've seen it in the 14 years we've been open. And the bottom line is, is, you know, it's getting more and more difficult to be able to take care of everybody. We have to have systems in place so as people leave, we can bring somebody in here and develop them and, you know, and bring them along at a price that we can afford. And that's the unfortunate reality of the situation. And that's not caused by the city council, certainly not caused by you. That's the position that we find ourselves in. Until something gives, either at the state level or if we go to a referendum at some point, we can certainly have that conversation. That's how it's going to have to be.
Right.
And, you know, it's like that in many businesses right now. And it's no different, whether you're private or public sector, the unemployment rate is really low right now. And, you know, for some people, the grass is always going to be greener on the other side. I like to think that we have a lot to offer our employees in Stoughton other than just the financial security that comes with it. There's, you know, many studies out there that say that pay is not the number one thing that people look for when they choose, they choose an organization, or if they want to stay at an organization. I think one of the things we need to do is strategize, what are the other important factors and the ones that we can control that we can afford and really work on them, as well as trying to offer a fair compensation package.
Right. But if you look at the human resources trends, what it comes back down to is the compensation is what attracts the person. I can tell you, the phone calls that come across my desk and come across Ginny's desk as well, the number one thing that they want to know if we don't have the salary posted is what is the salary? And they want to know what we're actually paying for that position and whether or not they're going to waste the time coming in for it. To speak also in regards to the IT position, the reason that position sat open, if you remember, the people that vacated that position, they got a better offer. And so, it was compensation-based. Sneha, she had an opportunity to go to Oak Park, and she was making more money. So, I realize that some of the studies do show nationwide that it's not always based on pay. But pay is what catches that person's eye originally to attract them. And where we start falling behind or we're losing staff, as we've talked about before, individuals are leaving, are leaving because they're making more. So, was that the number one reason they left? We will find that out through the accident interviews and be able to answer that. But there's But there's something that attracted them and they went and they were able to get more. So it's something that we really need to be looking at. I understand if we're running on a limited budget, we're running on a limited budget. But we need to do what it takes to retain the staff, which goes back to what Alderperson O'Connor is talking about. If we're not paying at market, I can tell you people are going to be looking, no matter how happy they are. They still have to put the food on the table and take care of their families.
Thank you. Alderperson Boersma.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, despite all my comments previously, you know, I see the need for police officer. And I just don't understand completely the magic date. And that is to start at January 1st, you know, with the hiring process. What about doing a half-year? I mean, what about limiting... I mean, if we don't have the money or it's going to be too tight, why don't we do it? Why don't we limit the Police and Fire Commission to not hiring at the first of the year, but maybe doing it in the midpoint of the year? That way, we know we're saving a few bucks anyway on this. I don't, I don't know why we would have to have it at the beginning of the year.
He said not till April.
Well, even a quarter of the year. Whatever is going to make sense for us, why we even have to begin the process, you know, early in the year. I just don't understand that completely. So, I mean, you know, if we want to limit it ourselves and we want to really follow and we really want to be good stewards of our money, then we don't have to necessarily start this whole thing anytime, you know, at the beginning of the year. Start it in the middle of the year or something. But, you know, the issue is going to be for the next year, too. I mean, if we don't have the money for this year, how are we going to come up with the money for the next year? We've got to be good stewards of this money because we don't want to be operating on a shoestring and then come up with something that is just going to devastate the city. So at this point, I can't support it. I mean, we just don't, it doesn't seem like we have the money. If we could start late, maybe I could be behind it.
Thank you. I think we all share a little frustration tonight, Sid. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Real quick, Tom, you don't have to start beginning of the year. It doesn't go to the commission until it's brought to the commission. So I think that can be controlled. The money is in place for Scott's amendment. The means for revenue is there. I mean, we will be getting the money. And if we have to do a referendum, we have to do a referendum. The means are there. And public safety is the most important part of the municipality. And I think we need to do this. I hope we can get all of your votes.
Alderperson O'Connor.
Call the question.
Thank you.
Takes a two-thirds vote.
We'll vote by roll call.
Johnson coming back?
I'm sorry?
Is Greg coming back?
No, he's not. He had to go home.
So that was a motion.
It's a motion to call the question.
Is there a second?
Is there a second to call the question?
Second.
Nope. So many seconds.
I got a question, please.
Okay. Real quick. The... No discussion when the question is called.
I just need to, I'm not, I don't want to, I just want to know what I'm voting on. Is it also the First Amendment or the Second?
No, you're voting on the question.
You're voting on stopping debate and voting.
Got it. Thank you.
So that's all that this one is then. Do you choose to stop debate and vote? And Lana will call the roll call. Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
No.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Miaske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen, oh, sorry. Truel.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of nine to two. Okay. So Lana will read the amendment that's currently on the floor. Yep, I'm sorry. Nope, you're good. Take your time. The amendment that I have that's currently on the floor is an amendment by Alderperson Truel to authorize the police department to add another staff person with a fiscal impact of $60,000 being funded from the money identified in Finance Director Labor Board's memo and to allow the police department to transfer $20,000 from the police department overtime account to use towards the additional staff person with a second by Engelberger. Okay. We'll vote by roll call. Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Reeves.
No.
Miaske.
No.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Truel.
Aye.
O'Connor.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. What was that?
No.
No? Motion carried on a vote of six to five. We'll go back to the original motion approving the Resolution 159 of 2017, which is the City of Stoughton's operating budget with the following two amendments that you just approved. We'll vote by roll. Kittleson.
Come back to me.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Yes, Tim?
Just real quickly, the amount will change, just so everyone's aware, and I will make sure that Lana gets the correct amount.
We'll need an amended, well, we need an amended resolution for a couple of things, but that as well, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Here was I had, you started with Alderperson Kittleson. I asked for us to come back, okay? Boersma.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Reeves.
Aye.
Miaske. Engelberger.
Aye.
Truel.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of eight to three. Yeah, I think we'll take maybe a 10-minute break and come back before we move into closed session. So we'll see you all at 9:10. And Agenda Item 10 is discussion and possible action regarding tax incremental financing for Stoughton Trailers and the Stoughton Trailers' proposal to grow their administration building here in Stoughton. I know the Trailers' folks are back. If we could have you come forward and talk to us about your plans, that would be great. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Bill Cole. I'm a municipal attorney with Ashley Brindleton. I'm representing Stoughton Trailers. I also have with me Rick Raymond and Lori Steen, who are here as well. I'll give you a short overview and then we'll be prepared to answer any specific questions you all may have as well. Stoughton Trailers is looking to build a corporate headquarters. Ideally, we'd like to build a $15 million facility, would employ, I believe, 200 people at the facility, payroll of about $15 million. The first and foremost desire is for it to be in Stoughton. I think we have an extremely long history with Stoughton, value that relationship considerably, and the desire of Stoughton Trailers is to remain here. The extent of the facility and in all frankness, the location of it would depend in somewhat on the TIF assistance that the community could provide. The one thing we do want to emphasize is any TIF assistance that the city would be willing to provide, we would have it on a pay-as-you-go type of basis, meaning we would not be asking for any money from the city until after the tax increment was paid to the city and available to the city. We aren't asking the taxpayers to advance Stoughton Trailer any funds. So with that, I believe in brevity, so we're here to answer any questions you may have or we understand your intent is to go into closed session. We will be here for a short period of time. If you have any questions in closed session, we'll certainly be here if you want to ask. Yes, sir?
I have an open session question, if that's okay? And that is, I have had some discussion about this since I learned about it through our communications. But the whole issue of why this particular area is considered to be a blighted area, I don't quite understand that.
That's probably more a question for Mr. Becker. There is the statutory requirements in order to blight areas, and they have to do with obsolete planning and old outdated structures, that sort of thing. My understanding is that the area meets the qualifications for a blighted area, but in all frankness, I haven't...
Would that include the need for more parking or...
Insufficient parking would certainly be one of the factors, yeah.
Okay. And I guess I need, I just, I guess I'm not, I guess I need to know why that's considered to be a blighted area, and maybe Gary could address that.
Yep, I'm sure Gary can help us with that as well. Did you want to help, did you want to answer that right now, Gary? That would be helpful.
Yeah. Well, first of all, it's up to the city council to make a finding or declaration that a particular area is blighted, but an area that is not appropriate for the type of development that is on the site and where the infrastructure is not appropriate to serve the land uses that it serves is one of the factors that qualifies for a finding of blight. Out there, and there's a presentation in your packet where I went out and documented the road conditions that are in front of Stoughton Trailers and the situation with parking. And I believe that those, the conditions that exist out there, given the fact that the number of employees that are currently there plus the proposed new addition, that it's, the layout is not suited for the type of land use.
Yeah. My initial thoughts always when I'm thinking blight is residential conditions, you know, where we have a residential home that, a number of them that, you know, just are in bad shape and all that. But I, so what I'm needing to do is expand my sort of understanding of what blight is.
Right. Blight doesn't only occur in residential areas, it can occur in commercial and industrial areas as well.
It seems like that's a fairly thriving industrial area.
It's thriving, but the layout is inappropriate for the amount of traffic and the number of employees that are out there.
I understand, I hear you. I hear you. I just, I'm trying to wrap my head around that one.
Yeah. And part of your consideration of this is, do you feel as a council that you could make a finding of blight? We'll present the documentation for it, but it will be up to the council to make that determination.
Thanks. Alderperson Bartlett.
Yeah, a question about the 200 employees. How many admin staff are currently there? How many new positions would this be? Is that 200 new positions for the new admin building?
Initially, correct me if I'm wrong, initially it would be the existing play. At the initial stage, there would be no additional payroll.
But one of the new buildings complete, these are 200 new employees coming?
No, no, they would be...
How many new positions would this add is what I'm looking for.
Initially, I don't believe there would be any.
Get her up to the mic.
And what is, are these all white, what type of salary range are they, these admin positions? Are they...
Lori, Lori, could we have you come up to the mic, please? Thank you.
These would be corporate employees, so probably mid-level to executive-level staff members.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Lori. For further questions while we're in open session, no, Council President Swadley.
Thank you. So we had, we had a conversation, a finance committee meeting and Gary's presentation. And you were looking at one or two options as far as sites. Are you still looking at that or have you narrowed it down?
It has not been narrowed down, no, sir.
Okay. Have you searched for any more or are you still looking at two options or...
Can I just, you mean within the city of Stoughton?
Yeah.
Are you familiar with what he's referring to?
I am, I am.
Sorry, I wasn't clear.
I believe the still, the plan is, would be one of the two options in Stoughton.
Okay. Any preference or...
I believe the preference would be to stay where the current facility is, right?
That transfer.
Yes.
Okay. And then as far as, I mean, one of the things we have to meet is the but-for clause. So can you explain to me the need or how you meet that but-for?
Sure.
At what point do we go into closed session? I just don't want to, you know...
This question is acceptable from an open session standpoint. We go into closed session when the council wants to have a confidential discussion about how it wants to respond to the proposal.
Okay. Thanks.
As it relates specifically to the but-for test, the extent of the construction, the facility would be dependent on the TIF assistance available. As we say in our application right now, the current facility is obsolete, it's inefficient, there's a strong desire to improve it. It is functional, it would work, and with minimal investment, we think could in the short-term work. The desire is to build a modern facility, but-for assistance, though, currently that's not going to happen. We also have two other communities that are offering assistance to Stoughton Trailers. So without any assistance from the city, we do have to strongly consider those offers from other communities. So I think that's where we get to the but-for.
Okay. So I'm just trying to understand. So basically, you're saying that you, I mean, you could do it, but financially it makes more sense to use TIF as a vehicle in order to pay for it.
No, I think that maybe I spoke poorly. The level of the facility would vary depending on the amount of assistance. Without assistance, the viable option, the most viable option, is a minimal improvement to the existing facility as opposed to building a new facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderperson Hirsch, Johnson, and then Engelberger.
Thank you. Now, I'm excited about possibly you guys expanding here. Question is, so Stoughton Trailers would be paying for part of a new building and you're asking for assistance from the city for TIFs for other parts. Are you asking for the city for assistance with like roads, sewer and water, or just to add into the overall expense of the new building?
The overall expense, the roads and specific, area-specific issues are somewhat dependent on which location would be selected. Certainly at one location, there are parking issues and street issues that we would be looking, some of the assistance would go toward that.
And so like utilities or water into the building or electrical, that's the type of assistance you're looking for or is it just an overall, just to make it a better project?
Monetary assistance as well, yes.
Alderperson Johnson.
I got a point of order, Your Honor. Why is this not up on the board?
Why is what not up on the board? I'm sorry.
Their presentation. He stood up and said, you got some information, do you have any questions? This right now is being on television, isn't it? Aren't we on television right now?
We're still in open, we are still in open session.
Why is this presentation not on the board?
Well, Gary's presentation, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, it has to do with negotiations and comparing one community to the next, which is our negotiate, part of what you'll want to talk about during negotiations.
Are you asking why the Stoughton Trailers' proposal...
Why is the proposal is not up here on the board?
Well, that could be up if you have it set up to be up.
You could request it to be on the board if that's your request.
I'm requesting it right now.
It should be on the board, and it should be presented, not only to the council, but to the community.
You can certainly request that, and we can help you with that.
You just did.
All right, it's getting late. All right. If you, I mean, we've sort of gone through most of it.
I'd like to have him ask his questions and give us some information about it.
I'd like to have Mr. Cole go through the application. Mr. Cole, are you prepared to do that tonight?
Yes, Mayor. As I say, the, section one of the application requested relevant information about Stoughton Trailer, the key individuals involved, that sort of thing. The history is laid out in response to question one. I don't know if it's worth rehashing here. I think the important thing is the 55-year history Stoughton Trailers and this community have together, and the various buildings that have been constructed over time, and how the, how the company has grown with the community. The key personnel listed are Lori, Rick Raymond, and Mike Fontaine, who is listed there as well. I do, I'd be remiss in saying too, that Mr. Wallene was able to make it to finance. He was unable to make it tonight due to a prior conflict, but desired to be here and apologizes for his presence not being here. But it was due to a conflict. Number two is asking for the consultants. Those are listed there, both architectural, interior design, and the advisors. Number three is the peculiar, the particulars you're asking about, about the planned facility. And as I explained, what we're looking for is a corporate headquarters, approximately 110,000 square feet in space. We're looking at a construction cost of about $15 million. I believe we answered that later on in the application. As it relates specifically to the facility, parking is the main difference between the two, and that was the two options that the council president was mentioning before. At one location, we'd be looking at an ability to accommodate up to 700 vehicles. Much of the other questions, four, five, and six, asking specifics about the location, that again would be dependent somewhat on the specific location, so we're unable to answer those at this time. Seven asked about relocation of economic activity. And again, the desire is that it remain in Stoughton. The current location is at Academy Street. So, we would be either moving within from the current facility to wherever we would build this new facility within the city. Number eight is the justification for the TIF assistance. That's the but-for test that was asked previously. This just goes into more detail of the response I gave. As to number nine, there would, the, all of it would be financed through Stoughton Trailers. This is not a, I guess, a type of development where we would be looking for partners or anything of that sort. This would be a Stoughton Trailer development. Outline of the costs, again, we have the two different scenarios. Costs are somewhat dependent on the location again. One location would be 110,000 square foot facility. Scenario two would be an 85,000 square foot facility. Again, they're looking at approximately $15 million in construction costs. That's what takes us to number 12, where the, the application asked for an estimate of the incremental property taxes. I estimated $8.2 million, and that is based on several assumptions, as I'm sure you know from prior developments. A lot of that is dependent, we're looking out 27 years, so we're having to make a lot of assumptions with inflation, mill rate, and all that sort of thing. I would certainly defer to Mr. Becker. He's your consultant on that, and is probably a more credible source than I on that. But the $8.2 million would assume a 27-year TIF district, that of the $15 million that is spent in building it, 75% of that would go to increased assessment. So, if 15 million is spent in constructing it, 75% of that would go to an increase in the assessed value of the facility, which would generate the taxes. We assume an inflation in the property values of 1.4, 1.5% per year, and we're assuming a mill rate of 22.21 cents through the life of the TID. Again, those are assumptions, and I'm sure Mr. Becker will have plenty of spreadsheets for you that will factor that in, but that's what the 8.2 million is based on.
Good question on that. So, exactly what number are you trying to recoup through the TIF for the construction costs?
The construction costs themselves, approximately $8 million.
Eight million, so you're looking to recoup eight of the 15 million through the use of the TIF?
Over the 27 years, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then lastly, 13 asked for the market value of fixtures and equipment. We estimate that at $5 million. This would be a corporate headquarters, so it would not be manufacturing equipment, anything of that sort. 14 is a question, assuming this is a housing development, it's not. There would be no tenants. As to 15, Stoughton Trailers, STI Holdings would be 100% owner of the facility. 16 asked for benefits of the proposed project to the city. You know, we try to lay those out in detail here. I think the primary benefit is Stoughton Trailers remaining in Stoughton, constructing world-class corporate headquarters, the aesthetics that go along with that, the retention of the employees that go along with that, and frankly, pride to both Stoughton Trailers and the city of Stoughton in doing that. 17 asked for financing arrangements. STI certainly has the financial wherewithal to undertake this project. This isn't the type of project where you have a developer where there's a concern whether or not financing could be available. If we get to that point and it's necessary, we could certainly provide adequate assurance to the city that this project would go forward. And then lastly, as a project schedule, I'd be, I think if I were speaking for Lori, I would say the project schedule is as soon as possible. But other than that, we don't have specific threshold or milestones at this point.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from our council, Council President Swadley?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I'm trying to think about, you know, where Stoughton Trailer's plans on being in five, 10, 27 years from now? I imagine you have business plans or forecasting. Is there anything you can share with us to kind of tell us where the company is and where it plans on being in 27 years?
Well, the company has facilities in Stoughton and two other locations right now. There's no plan to change any of that. I think right now, the, moving forward, the initial thing is, in which community is the corporate headquarters going to be built? And I think without, at the risk of stating the obvious, that would pretty much anchor this, this company in the long term.
Thank you. Alderperson Johnson.
Hi, thank you, Your Honor. I do have some questions going off what Alderperson Bartlett was talking about. I'm trying to get an idea, a little bit more of the employee count. Is it 5% of the 1,500 that you already employ? Or is it 5% of the 200 of this building that you already now have over on Academy?
Let me ask Lori to come forward, because I think I, I don't want to speak in error.
And is this, is it, like you were saying, hi Lori, is this all only mid-level that you're going to be hiring? That it's going to, you're just increasing the mid-level management, 5% all the way around?
For the corporate building, correct. It would be 5% of the 200.
5% of the 200 over on Academy?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you're going to hire 10 more people?
Could be. I mean, it's, it's a, you know, based on their projected plans, it could be more than that.
Okay, and then as far as when I was doing the reading, thank you, it's pretty much, because I live a block away from there, so I know the building and I know the parking situation. So, that, that area is pretty much going to be kind of reduced in its significance because of the date of the building, right? You're not planning on leaving that building, are you at all, or?
The one on Academy Street? We haven't made that decision yet, but building this corporate building would take everybody out of that building and put them into the new building there.
Okay.
Because there, you know, if you look at the building that's on Academy Street, it wasn't built to be an office building.
Right.
It was manufacturing. And in order for the company to keep growing in the direction that it needs to grow, it needs to have a presence in a true office building. And that's the family's goal, is to put that presence out there for them, so it'll help them continue to grow. But, you know, that building today isn't designed to be an office building, and everybody feels it. So, we, it's something we need to do, but the family hasn't decided exactly what they're going to do with that building, once we do move out of it.
Okay, me being a neighborhood, even before, I'm concerned about that that's just going to be left, and, you know?
No, we'll have, at least for the first five years, our R and D department will be in there, so there'll be about three to four people working in there every single day.
Okay.
And, you know, we'll use, because right behind the building on Academy is what we call Plant Three.
Okay.
Where we build the grain hoppers. That'll continue, we'll do grain hoppers out of there as well, too. It's just that you're not going to have, we wouldn't have the office people in that building. Thank you, Lori, you're welcome.
Thank you. Alderperson Bartlett.
In section 10, you mentioned part of this TIF funds would go to the Wallene Foundation. What is, can you elaborate what that foundation is and why TIF money should be used for the Wallene Foundation's space in your building? I don't know what that is exactly, so.
Yeah, I misspoke if I.
It's written in section 10, is that in your application? In both scenarios?
They would occupy some space in the building, true. Rick, can you explain the foundation, its purpose, what it would occupy in the property, that sort of thing?
I think there, isn't there like one office space in there now for the Wallene Foundation?
At the Wallene Foundation, it's the family foundation that has purposes of giving away money and so forth. We're talking about one office, one person in one office, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Alderperson Borzma.
I just think the obvious question is why TIF funding would go for a private company with public funding for financing. And I, and I see the positives about maybe having this be a corporate headquarters, but can the Stoughton Trailers not, I'm going for this but-for, not build a facility based on the fact that they don't have enough money to do that and project into the future? I'm just, I'm just struggling why TIF funding would be absolutely necessary in this area.
It's not a matter of would it be impossible to build a structure. Certainly, Stoughton Trailers could find, could build many different structures. The issue is what is financially prudent? And doing the financially prudent thing at this juncture could mean nothing more than renovating the current structure, which is not really, while it, it may work from an accounting standpoint, is not the long-term desire of management.
The story we think.
Sid, I think, I think that Gary will also help us walk through a conversation regarding a different kind of a TIF, more of an economic development TIF, which is, do we, as, as the Stoughton Common Council, wish to have this building here in Stoughton? And do we, if the answer to that is yes, do we then wish to, and I'll use the word compete, with Evansville or Broadhead about having that administrative office here? So, and Gary will help us with that. I may have said it wrong, or I may have done okay.
And has Stoughton Trailers ever used TIF funding to build a building like this?
Stoughton Trailers was one of our first most successful TIFs in the city of Stoughton back in, I'm looking to Gary, you're writing for the date.
It was the early 90s.
Yeah, out where the current manufacturing facility is now. We purchased land, we worked with them through that TIF process. They built it and closed it right away, right away, within a few years. It was very successful.
And what was, how much was that TIF, just the bottom line?
I don't remember, I'm sorry. I don't know. We can look it up for you, but I don't know it.
Is there one audit report somewhere?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Other questions? Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you. Where is the development scenario two location, or don't you have that?
The second location, do we have a specific second location?
This is outlined in that, in that package, but what we're looking at, because we, the desire is to stay in Stoughton. I mean, Stoughton Trailers has been in this town, in the city for 56 years now, and they do, really do want to stay here. So, the second option would be to find at least 12 acres elsewhere here in Stoughton. So, that's, that's our plan is, we really want to try to make it work here, in the city of Stoughton.
Not on your South Street or Academy Street location?
New property, new property.
Do you need both sites, or you only need one site? You only need one site for the administrative building you're talking about?
Correct, correct.
Do you need a second site for something else, or?
No, no, no. No, if, if the administrative building goes on another piece of property offside of one of our, our own, it would just allow us to expand potentially on another one. So, like Veterans Road, it would give us more room to expand if we needed to.
To expand the manufacturing operation there?
Yes, yes.
Thanks, Lynn. Additional questions, or are you ready to move into a closed session to have more conversation?
Thank you all, we sincerely appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Moving to a closed session?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to move into closed session. And I'll read it. Per state statutes 19.85 parent one parent E, to consider the tax incremental financing application for Stoughton Trailers. The council may reconvene in open sessions to take action on matters discussed in closed session and to consider the remaining items on the agenda. Should be adjournment.
Could need to be a roll call for that.
Can we roll?
Should be a roll call, sure.
Yes. Swadley.
Aye.
Borzma.
Aye.
Johnson. Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0. Thank you. Thank you very much, and we'll be in touch.
And I asked Hammy to read the motion because she wrote it down so beautifully.
To direct staff to develop an outline of a development agreement discussion to bring back to the common council, tell Stoughton Trailers that we are working on this, and to do so on the basis of a blight elimination TIF district.
Second.
Come answer questions. We'll, by roll call. Borzma.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
No.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Motion carries 9 to 2. Your motion to adjourn? Are those in favor, aye?
You can throw anybody's name.
I know, I could.
I'll work on those minutes, Cam.
Okay, great. And then just if you could send them to me, because we're going to have to email board it, but.
I got to be really careful.
But I do, we're saving it up.